Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, September the 15th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We're glad you're here. I wouldn't ask you to silence your mobile devices at this time. If you've got telephones, pagers, all that kind of good stuff, please put those on vibrate so we don't have interruptions tonight. I'll remind all speakers, as you come to the microphone tonight, please be sure to press the button on the right so the red light comes on and we get a good recording and a good YouTube broadcast tonight. And, Madam Clerk, I'll make note, all commissioners are present, along with our county manager, our attorney, along with our finance officer, and nobody else over there next to you are the... Okay. All right. Good to see you all tonight. Everybody is present, Madam Clerk. All right, we're happy to have Pastor Tamika Garrison with us tonight from Carolina Carrying. And Pastor Garrison is going to bring our invocation, and following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're glad to have some 4H folks with us tonight with Cooperative Extension. So they'll come up just following the invocation and come right in this area, and we'll face the flag and pledge allegiance to the flag, and we'll follow your leadership for the pledge at that time. So let's all stand together for the invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious and holy God, we come to you with thanks for this time, for this ability to be here, with gratitude for those who are willing to put themselves forward to serve and for those who tirelessly serve this beautiful community. We thank you for the rich history and beauty and love that just resonates through Burke County. We ask now that you be with us. Allow us to curb any anxieties that we have coming into this room and celebrate the voices both big and the voices very small, for they provide us hope, hope for our future. Guide us now, Lord, as we make choices, as we discern, as we disagree and we agree. Lord be a witness to us. It's all these things that we ask. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Paul Rachel, y'all come on up? Okay, let's turn and face the flag back here in the corner, and we'll follow your leadership, okay?
... to the flag of the United States of America, and so we call it for Richard's hands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna ask you guys to hang out there for just a second. I want the commissioners to come down. Let's get a picture with these guys tonight. Everybody good? Shout, clerk? Okay, very good. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, gentlemen, this brings us to item number four of our agenda tonight, approval of the agenda. And, gentlemen, you've had that agenda for a couple of days, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, sign if I have the uplifted hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number five is approval of meeting minutes. Tonight, gentlemen, we have the minutes from May the 19th, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Special Meeting; May 19th, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting; June the 2nd, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Pre-Agenda Meeting. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following minutes as written: May 19th, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Special Call Meeting; May 19th, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting; and June the 2nd, 2025, Board of Commissioners' Pre-Agenda Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right, this brings us to item six, presentations. We have several presentations tonight, and we are glad to have with us Cooperative Extension tonight, 4H Program Overview and Recognition of 4H State and National Championship Winners. And we're happy to have Nikki Carpenter, our Cooperative Extension Agent, with us tonight. And Nikki, we'll hear from you at this time.
Thank you. So my name is Nikki Carpenter, and I'm your Burke County 4H Youth Development Extension Agent. And so I wanted to tell you a little bit about 4H. It is the largest youth development organization in the United States, reaching more than 7 million young people. You might recognize the symbol as the green four-leaf clover that has an H on each leaf. The Hs stand for head, heart, hands, and health. What makes 4H special is that it's the only youth program connected directly to our land-grant universities. For many kids, it's actually their first step into higher education. But the best part, 4H learning doesn't happen by reading or listening. We call it learn by doing. Kids gain knowledge, skills, and confidence through hands-on projects, projects that build on each other year after year, and along the way, they discover how to use what they've learned to improve their lives, their families, and their communities. So who can join 4H? If you're between the ages of 5 and 18, there's a place for you in 4H. You can explore projects in cooking, clothing design, public speaking, aerospace, robotics, livestock, you name it. You might raise an animal, build a rocket, or even join a virtual club with kids from across the world. And for adults, there's a role for you, too. You can volunteer as a club leader, help at events, or just lend your talents where they're needed most. To get started, it's easy. All you have to do is reach out to our extension office, and we will guide you through the process. So that's 4H, learning, growing, and connecting together. So let's talk about how we do it here in Burke County. Burke County 4H uses several different delivery modes to share opportunities with our community. First, we have clubs. These include community clubs, they may have special interest groups, homeschool clubs, horse clubs. We also have spin clubs, which stand for special interest. And these are like archery, fishing, cooking. There's also specialty groups as backpack babysitters, team leadership in practice, and junior beekeepers. Then, we also focus on positive youth and adult partnerships, and these happen through our after-school programs, one-on-one mentorships, community collaborations, and family-focused activities like Health Rocks. Another important mode is our 4H school enrichment. We have project guides, curriculum for individual students, as well as the full classroom. These are led by either agents, educators, volunteers, and they're for all of our different schools, private, charter, public, and even they're in our after-school. So here's something we're proud of. In 2024 alone, Burke County 4H reached nearly 2,100 school-age youth through these delivery modes. That's 2,100 young people learning, growing, and building brighter futures right here in our community. Some of your 4H opportunities have been listed on the slide there with you, and so our core mission of 4H is to guide young people in leadership development, career, life skills, civic engagement, but it's grounded in agriculture and natural resources. What makes 4H unique is that you, as the member, decide what you want to learn and how fast you want to move. This builds goal-setting skills and gives you the chance to earn awards and incentives along the way. Tonight, we're especially honored to recognize some of our outstanding Burke County 4Hers who have earned state-level awards this year by doing these type of goals. So let's give a big congratulations to our Burke County 4H Horse Bowl team. Do you want them to come up now? Perfect. Okay, so, great. So if I could have our Horse Bowl team and coach, please come up. All right, so our Horse Bowl team, we have Coach Crosby Norris, Lola DeRosier, Sadie Saubrin, Julian Hernandez, Ellie Hudson, and Ruby DeRosier. DeRosier, thank you. All right, and they've got some certificates for you. Now, these guys went to our state competition. They won first place in our West District, and then they went on to our state competition in Raleigh in March, where they placed fifth in the state. Ellie also won second-place high individual. Sadie placed seventh high individual out of 60 rookie junior competitors in hippology. Ruby earned fifth-place high senior individual in Horse Bowl, which qualifies her to compete on the NC State's Horse Bowl team and represent North Carolina at the Southern Regionals. And Ellie also took first place in our junior photography in the Horse Artistic Expression State Competition. Congratulations to our Burke County team. This next young lady welcomes a goal-setting challenge, and each year builds upon her knowledge, experience, and skills. Earning a national trip as an award, Addie Fulbright excelled in this year's ARI competition, which stands for Application, Interview, Resume, and Essay. Congrats to her, and I can't wait to hear about the trip. Unable to be with us this evening, Jacob Hanlon, who is currently at NC State University, was awarded three college scholarships through our 4H Scholarship Program for his many accomplishments. So we added his photo, and he's currently in class. Congrats, Jacob. All right, another major highlight is our 2025 North Carolina State 4H Horse Show, held July 9th through 13th at the James B. Hunt Horse Complex in Raleigh. The event brought together 217 horse and rider combinations from 38 counties. It was incredible showcase of North Carolina 4H youth talent and dedication. So a few guys from the horse show, we have Jessica Carswell, Ruby DeRosier, Sadie Saubrin, Ellie Hudson. Ruby, I got your name in there twice, I think. One was supposed to be Lola. Lola, that's my fault. And I added a picture of where Ellie had her junior photography with the horse photo. Congrats to our 4H Horse Show competitors. These are basically forms put together that give the members 4H story, their chosen 4H project area, and their knowledge gained in that area from the whole previous year, along with a place to record their community service and citizenship activities. Burke County received notification this past July that we had members to place on the district state level, but they will receive their returning books on November 18th at our County Achievement Night. So they know by tonight that they have won, but they don't know what place until they do our county program. So y'all save the date, November 18th. So 4H Project Record Book winners, we have Aviana Page Clark. If you'll please come up as I call your names. Ellie Hudson. Emma Oakley. And they've got certificates over here for you. Emma Oakley. Kaylee Hoyle. Emily Hall. Joey Morrison. Hazel Cole. Hannah Cole. Ruby DeRosier. Madison Pryor. And Addie Fulbright. And this is a very proud moment as an agent to have this many recognized on the district state level for project record books, so congratulations. This is some of their first time being here at your place, so we're very excited they're here. We also want to recognize the remarkable contributions of 4H leaders and supporters. The Hall of Fame Award honors volunteers, extension professionals, staff, donors, and others who have made a lasting impact on 4H through their time, energy, and resources. On April 26, 2025, at a special ceremony at NC State University, we were proud to celebrate Lisa Hanlon, who was inducted to the North Carolina 4H Hall of Fame. Her leadership and service truly embodied the 4H motto of making the best better. So thank you all for celebrating with us and for continuing to support the Leaders of Tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Nikki, for that presentation, and thank you to all of you guys for the work and effort that you've put into all the accomplishments that you've made. We're certainly proud of our folks and glad that you could be here tonight so that we could recognize you and all that you've done. So, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report as presented by Nikki.
Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to ask, can we make all of our meetings like this? This was a lot of fun. But I would, at this time, make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Second item, also coming from Cooperative Extension tonight, proclamation declaring National 4H Week. This week presented by Nikki Carpenter as well.
We're grateful to our county commissioners and officials for their ongoing support. This year, we presented them with the National 4H Week proclamation officially declaring October 5th through 11th of 2025 as National 4H Week.
Thank you, Nikki. Gentlemen, you have the proclamation in front of you. I won't take time to read all of it. Maybe I'll just hit a couple of highlights, just so our folks can know what we're talking about. As Nikki said, this is a proclamation declaring October 5th through 11th as National 4H Week. 4H is America's largest youth development organization. Programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation. 4H connects young people, as we saw tonight, many of them expanding from its strong agricultural roots, and supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Institute of Foods, and Agriculture 4H Program. So with that proclamation, gentlemen, we will proclaim that week, October 5th through 11th, as National 4H Week. Do I hear a motion to accept this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve proclamation number 2025-15.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Nikki, again, for being here tonight and for all of your folks. This brings us to item number three. North Carolina National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and this comes from our representative of Business Relations, Janet Hannah. And we'll wait just a moment to give the time for folks to regroup just a bit.
The horses are hungry.
That was a lot of fun, guys.
Well, girls, you're gonna have a tough act to follow, but we're counting on you. We'll give you just another moment. Those kids gotta get home, do some homework tonight. All right, now, with that, we'll recognize Janet Hannah, and I know several other folks that are here tonight. I'm gonna ask y'all to introduce yourselves as you present tonight, representing employment and independence for persons with disabilities. And again, I think a little bit different name change tonight, so you'll help us with that as we go along? Okay? I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. They had left the speaker on, so... My name is Shelley Cash, and I am with NC EIPD, and I have two coworkers with me, but I was gonna say that that was gonna be a tough act to follow, and I'm glad to know that we have so many talented youth in Burke County. Our mission tonight is to obtain the proclamation, and the endgame, the National Disability Employment Awareness Month theme this year is celebrating value and talent, and that is the 2025 ending. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Nyra.
Good evening. My name is Nyra Simmons. I'm the counselor in charge with EIPD, and my role is to assist our clients in providing any services to help them reach their employment goal.
Thank you, gentlemen, for having us today. My name is Janet Hannah, and I am a Business Relations Representative with EIPD, our short, aka Vocational Rehab. Just to give you a little bit of information before we ask for the proclamation, Burke County, according to the 2023 census, had 87,570 citizens. Also, according to that census, 11,910 citizens in Burke County have a disability. Those disabilities are both hidden disabilities and disabilities that we see. Our Western Regional Workshorse West location, here in Morganton, that serves Burke County, last year, we had a total of 215 individuals to apply for our services. Of those 215 individuals, myself, Shelley, and another representative, we received 48 referrals. We placed those 48 referrals in employment and successfully closed 23 of them. In addition to that, we had 13 internships going on throughout the county, as well as three of those individuals were hired directly by the internships when they completed them. I'm sharing this information with you this evening because we have a need in Burke County. We're a great hidden resource, and we're the best hidden resource in the county. So we ask that if you know anyone with a disability, to please refer them to us for services if they're interested in going to work in maintaining employment. At this time, we would like to ask you for the proclamation for the National Disability Employment and Awareness Month for the month of October.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. You've got that proclamation in front of you, and again, I'll just hit a couple of highlights. This month, October of 2025, is celebrated as the 80th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. The EAM has since evolved to highlight the importance of creating, sustaining, inclusive workplaces that provide opportunities for individuals with disabilities. America looks to forward for commemorating its 250th anniversary in 2026, and this year's in the EAM theme and graphics align with that milestone. 2025 theme, Celebrating Value and Talent, recognizes the skill, dedication, and innovation that workers with disabilities bring to their jobs, strengthening our communities and economy, while reminding us that America's true strength lies in the talents of all of its people. And I want to thank you for the work that you guys are doing and have done for many, many years right here in Burke County, and do a great job and help lots of our folks get gainfully employed and be a part of our workforce. So, gentlemen, with that, I will ask for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a point of order.
Yes.
On our handout, it says proclamation 2025-15. It should be 2025-14, and I will make a motion that we approve that.
Madam Clerk, you buying all that, huh? Okay. Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand? Five to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Brings us to item number four. And Mr. County Manager, you're gonna talk to us about the year-end report. Again, Mr. Manager, you've got hard acts to follow, and we'll look forward to what you have for us tonight.
I'm perfectly aware and yield to the previous two, both of which did terrific, and I like the board, very happy that they came and enjoyed those presentations very much. What I wanted to present to the board tonight is something we do annually. Each of you, at your desk there, you have the physical copy of the end-of-year report, and this is something that we, again, annually try to deliver. In September, as you're all aware, our fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, so we're approaching that 90-day mark following the end of the fiscal year, and we've been able to... We're currently working through the audit process. They're actually here in town this week, our CPA audit firm. But we, at a staff level, and I'd like to say special thanks to certainly our finance office for helping compile this, but all of our department heads who submitted data to be included into this interview report. I think it's good from a staff perspective to make sure that we're effectively communicating performance goals to the board, that we're following your strategic plan, and that we're on track and in alignment with many of our performance indicators, key performance indicators, such as debt ratios, fund balance percentages, and those type of things. So I've put together a brief summary and a slide deck, but again, that full report is there in front of you. Certainly happy to answer any questions following the presentation, but I always like to start just by talking about, I don't know that you can accomplish your goals if you don't know what they are. I don't know how you measure progress or outcomes if you haven't stated those. And over the last three years, as I'm concluding my third full year here in Burke County, I think that the single biggest investment and movement that we've made is not in what we do, but how we do it, being intentional about our culture, about the people that we're recruiting, about the service delivery impact that we're trying to make, and really being focused on continuous improvement, measurement of performance, and doing that through an actionable set of values that we can really use as a guiding North Star. I think that's probably the thing that I try to put in front of our team as often as I can, more often than really any other transactional type accomplishment, because I think that is what will create that lasting and sustainable improvement that we all want to talk about. Part of our performance is commitment to communication, and we try to do that periodically throughout the year. So if you look at our kind of scheduled, formalized reports to the board, we're in this end of the fiscal year, September reporting, and when I look at the year, I think it was an incredibly successful fiscal year, certainly not one without challenges, but in the wake of those challenges, I could not be more proud to serve this board and to serve alongside our team. Just a quick reflection, I'll remind you, we implemented the first-ever comprehensive pain classification study last July. That had never been done in the history of Burke County. County. It was really a project that accomplished three things. One, it was market-based wages with full implementation, but it was more than that. It was also the first time in the history of this organization that we had started and done a full audit of our job description. So there were people who worked here for twenty years, and you think about the change in policy and technology and regulatory environment, and yet their job descriptions had never been updated, and it didn't give us a real, you know, a real in-the-weeds opportunity to evaluate need and highest-in-best use and automation and process flow. So that was a significant, significant project that we were able to implement. It was also the first full year of bringing EMS billing in-house, and I'll give you some more of that data later in the presentation, but it certainly has proven to provide dividends. We also, as you all are aware, transitioned. Historically, Burke County had contracted with a company to haul our MSW, which is municipal solid waste, so think household waste. We don't collect that here at our landfill. We have to transfer that to a landfill in Caldwell County, and we've historically paid for that. We transitioned that in-house this year, and the savings to taxpayers were about one-point-one million dollars. Our talent retention metrics for the third consecutive year concluded at lower than ten percent. We were successfully able to renegotiate both administrative, third-party administration costs of Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as lower our claims costs this year cumulatively about a million dollars between the two. Something that I'm very proud of is that just only a few short months ago, our environmental health for on-site septic was at twelve weeks, and as early as today, it's less than thirty days. And Burke County received an award from your National Association, the NACO Association, for innovation, because we created some ARC GIS, and we did some changes to how we dispatch those and how we prioritize those, but that's a really big deal as our community continues to see a little bit of an uptick in single-family home permitting. We were able to stay committed to our capital plan, specifically EMS, animal services, and the courthouse, all of those projects are on time and under budget, and made significant progress during the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. We completed, again, the first-ever comprehensive public safety strategic plan, which, you know, pointed out some really, what I would consider almost low-hanging fruit as performance indicators, things that we've talked about, that you all are aware of, dispatch delay in I-1-1, lag time in EMS, and things that are really making our performance in public safety, you know, significantly improve in a highest-in-best use, a pretty low return on investment from a cost perspective strategy. We've eliminated, we've had a backlog of child welfare cases in our Department of Social Services that have lingered for years. We've completely eliminated that, that no longer exists, caseloads are down to ten and eleven to one, they were at thirty-one, they're ten to eleven to one. That may be the single most important thing that we've accomplished this entire year. We've advanced our water sewer AI study. We know about our water spoilage and our sewer INI problems. We had the third consecutive year of positive cash flow this year in that fund, which you'll see here just in a moment, but we're building towards sustainability and the potential of expansion. We've centralized, and the Board of Commissioners took action on February the fourteenth to bring our opioid settlement coordinator back under the county commissioners and centralized that as a standalone department, and that's led to significant progress in a very short period of time. And, you know, not, last but not least, certainly, we've had eleven and a half months of disaster recovery efforts, which have been a donation center, debris collection, waterway collection, a massively complicated public assistance application for a tick over eleven million dollars with the Federal Emergency Management Administration, private property debris collection, delivering medicines and insulin and oxygen and all kinds of other things. So, you know, again, when I reflect on all of those in a limited twelve-month period, I think that we're a better organization today and a better team today than we were then, and I'm also not confident that, given that level of load, that this organization a few years ago would have been as successful as we've been. So when I talk about culture and sustainable performance and transformational, that's why I think it's so important to have this embedded culture that we've been trying to build, because the transactional components matter, but it's a much more meaningful delivery, I think, when folks are doing it for the right reasons, and that's why we're, I think, mostly successful. I'll focus primarily what's in the end-of-year report, hovers around, focus area number four in your strategic plan, which is fiscal stewardship. So I'm gonna go through some highlights that are in your report, just to, this is supposed to be a revenue portfolio, I apologize, there's parts of the slide missing, but you'll see how I can do off the top of my head. Our total revenue last year was about one-hundred-and-thirteen-point-eight million dollars, fifty-three-point-six-four percent of that came from property tax revenue. We've continued to see that dependency come down year over year, which is good. Sales tax is about sixteen-point-seven-five percent, which is our second-largest revenue stream represented there in the green, and then restricted intergovernmental, which is primarily public health and DSS grants and flow-through dollars, are our third largest. And that would align with most every other county in North Carolina. It's important when we start talking about property taxes being a tick over fifty-three percent of our total revenue, one of the ways that we measure our efficiency in taxation is an analytic that we call per capita income, our per capita tax levy per capita, and really what that means is what's our total levy divided by the total number of people in Burke County. So this is not per household or per taxpayer, it's divided per person, but I think it is a fair and equitable way to compare us to the other ninety-nine counties in the state. And so what we've got here on the left-hand side, you can see we're currently, based on our twenty-four, twenty-five levy, at about six-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars per capita, which is the eighteenth lowest in the state of North Carolina, which is a good measure of our efficiency and ability to operate at a low cost. And I've just compared that to some other counties in the region. For example, many times Burke County is compared to Kstoppa County, who has a thirty-five, thirty-six cents tax rate, but if you look at their per capita distribution, it's, you know, about a hundred, maybe eighty dollars more expensive than Burke County, and I think that's just important to keep in mind, it's not a perfect analytic, there's not a perfect analytic, some households have three people, some have two, some have five, but it is a, you know, one way to measure operational efficiency. Our top ten taxpayers here on the screen, collectively, they have about a seven-hundred-million-dollar valuation that equates to about three-point-nine million dollars in revenue, and that is equivalent to about three-point-six cents, so one cent on our property tax rate is about a million, almost one-point-one million dollars, a million ninety thousand dollars for the year we just concluded. We've continued to see high performance in the tax office, a little bit of a dip in collection percentage, finishing the year at about ninety-eight-point-four, but still really, really good. John and his team continue to really hover at a very proficient level. Sales taxes, we've talked throughout the year, we were Q-two, Q-three, seeing a little bit of a dip, and we were, you know, also seeing that in some other economic-driven revenue sources, but the fourth quarter really saw a strong rebound. We ended the year plus four percent compared to the twenty-three, twenty-four year, and you can see that here, we've just broken it down by quarter, but a nice rebound here in the fourth quarter, and the backside of the third quarter also, but overall, about a four percent growth, and that's really across all three articles. As a reminder, Article thirty-nine, forty, and forty-two are our prime components. All one-hundred counties in North Carolina have these articles. Article thirty-nine is the first one cent. Articles forty and forty-two make up the second one cent, they're a half cent apiece, that's the two cents that come back to the county. The other four-point-seven-five cents go to the state as income in their budget, but good growth on both sides, which tells us there's point-of-sale growth here in Burke County, which is good for our economic, you know, just health, and then also statewide, which is how thirty-nine is distributed on a population basis, so that tells us that we're seeing a little bit of growth across the state. Another good indicator of economic performance and also staff performance is building permits, and so this is a measure of of single-family homes as well as commercial structures. You can see kind of flat on the commercial structure side, but a nice rebound, about sixty-five, seventy more single-family permits in twenty-four, twenty-five than what we saw the previous year, more in line with what we saw two years ago. And again, I'll remind you, and I think you all know, these are, these are single-family home permits that are in the county's permitting district, so outside largely the municipal boundaries, and most of those do require on-site septic, and so being at that thirty-day turnaround for folks that are needing to put a septic system in is a really, really important component of development. Here, I'm just comparing both revenue and expense for planning and zoning, as well as building inspections. I'd like to report that the building inspections department, because of the increase in volume, were able to cover their costs, so the revenue generated from building permits this year were able to cover the cost of salaries, operations, and a little bit of capital was in that department, and you can see that from year to year, how it changes. One of the biggest parts of our budget this year, and one of the accomplishments we talked about earlier, was this was the first full year of in-house EMS billing. As a reminder, prior to 2023, we had a contract with a company in Winston-Salem, Thomasville area called ESMC, and they're a contract billing company, so you're billing Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, makes up about ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of the total billing, and they charge about a six percent fee, net collections, and they would just withhold that, and they had historically averaged somewhere between fifty and fifty-two percent collections. That six percent equated to about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year contract, so by bringing that in-house, we've been able to eliminate that contract, and as you can see, we grew revenue this year by about forty-one percent, from about five-point-one million to seven-point-five million. So that's unrestricted revenue that helps offset the cost of the department, again, lowering the pressure on the property tax rate, as well as giving us the resources that we need to invest in EMS to improve response time and overall performance and healthcare outcomes. Another very positive component of this year's financial performance is our investment income. There was a very intentional effort, I think, over the last couple of years, again, I'll brag on our entire team, especially our finance team, but we have grown from sixty-three-thousand dollars in interest income in 2022. This past year, a tick over two-point-one million. It is down a little bit from the prior year, and the reason it's down primarily is there's less cash on hand. We started the animal services building, the EMS building, invested into the courthouse this year, so there's simply less cash on hand to invest. Rates have been largely stable, so we primarily invest in commercial paper, US Treasuries, very, very low-risk vehicles, but haven't seen a tremendous amount of volatility in rates, so largely the change is just available cash to invest. As we reported at your last board meeting, we're still actively managing about twenty-four grants, a total of about six-point-two million dollars. I've talked about our capital improvement plan, but I think all are moving and in a really good spot, and staying committed to that five-year perpetual plan, I think, has been a big part of our operational strategy. Occupancy tax closed the year at about one-point-three million dollars. As a reminder, the county levies the occupancy taxes, it does all of one-hundred counties, we have a six percent occupancy tax in Burke County, that's the maximum allowed by statute. What's different here is in two thousand and seven, there was local legislation passed about how that's distributed, so you can see, even though we collected one-point-three, we paid out one-point-two-eight-three, so that net difference of, call it twenty-five-thousand dollars is what stays in the county's coffers, the rest of it goes to either the city of Morganton, Valdez, or to stays at the TDA, and that's based on legislation that makes us, again, different than the other ninety-nine counties in North Carolina. Quickly looking at our enterprise funds, solid waste had its best financial year ever. Now, we finished the year at a positive cash flow of about two-point-eight million dollars. I would point out about one-point-five of that was from a single payer, so the debris collection efforts from around the county, SDR was the contractor of the two-point-eight, they were one-point-five, but even if you exclude those, and the reason is, if you look at the materials by type, we typically collect between fifteen-hundred and two-thousand tons of brush, and this year, we collected forty-two-thousand tons of brush. That's the difference, but even if you exclude that extraordinary revenue source from SDR of about one-point-five million, the funds still turn a profit of about one-point-three, which is in line with where it should be to pay for closing costs and monitoring costs and all the environmental regulatory, as well as preparing for potentially the next sale and phase of MSW exploration here in Burke County. Water sewer also had a really good year. We know that there's still performance yet to be garnered from this fund. We still have a tremendous amount of water lossage that we're continuing to track down, as well as overpayments on the sewer side to primarily the city of Hickory for infiltration and infill that comes from rainwater. We're getting closer to having those things rectified. There is a, an RFP posted now for sewer meters, we'll put in five sewer meters, all paid for through a grant from the Division of Water Resources, that'll monitor where our system connects with some of our municipal partners, so that we can actually measure sewer consumption versus just using the bill that they provide to their customers, and I think that'll give us a much more accurate billing component and cut down on that significantly. But the fund was still able to perform at a positive cash surplus of four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars for the second year. Last year was four-thirty-one, this year's four-thirty-three, so pretty consistent. We're also working through our water metering project, as you all recall, about twenty-five-hundred water meters are being replaced over the next four to five months, and that too is also paid for with a grant from the Division of Water Quality. So excited to see that number two continue to improve. Of our total budget, the functional allocation really did not change, still about twenty-six percent to human services, twenty-three percent to education, and about thirty percent to public safety. One of the numbers that we track as a good way to make sure that we're, again, operating as efficiently as we can is simple things like energy cost, light bills, and heating and cooling bills, and those type things, and trying to make sure, what we like to call intelligent commissioning, that we have lights that turn off automatically, and we have, you know, just some safeguards in place that we're continuing to manage that, and we compare ourselves on a square footage cost basis, as well as a total cost basis, to some similar-sized counties. This year is about one-point-one-five million. Both health and DSS continue to operate very competitively. Public health, or, excuse me, social services had about a forty-one percent subsidy, total budget was about twenty-two million, a little over eight and a half, that came from local resources. Public health was about fifty-eight percent subsidy, so about a five-and-a-half-million-dollar total budget. When I look at our public safety portfolio, total spend was about thirty-one-point-seven million dollars, and you can see the allocation by type and by department there. And when I compare our total spend, now, this would be at the end of June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, so this is, this data is twelve months old, and the reason it's twelve months old is we don't have peer comparisons for current-year counties, but I think it's just an important analytic to try to compare what are our taxpayers contributing to these functions compared to other counties. So as of audited numbers, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, that's what this is indicating, and you can see there, both from law enforcement and detention, we're still operating in a very efficient way. Our EMS department is almost exactly in line with some of these peer counties. Risk management, also a major component of our overall spend, and it's a controllable spend. We try to do training and put programs in place, but we are a self-insured largely organization on the wellness side for workers' comp, property and liability. We do buy a package, but we still control the claim side of that to a certain extent, and you can see a little bit of an uptick in workers' comp costs, about five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars, up about ninety-thousand dollars from the prior year. We had two really good years, following a tough twenty-one, twenty-two, but still, you know, lower than what we were in twenty-twenty-one, so still a good year. Property and liability was about twenty-thousand dollars lower than twenty-three, twenty-four, so performing well there. Our employee wellness cost, this is just claims data, this does not include the third-party administrative cost, but continuing to improve. We were able to reduce the monthly claimed cost by about fifty-thousand dollars a year, about six-hundred-thousand dollars there. The formulary pharmacy formulary spend was also slightly less, as well as the administrative costs altogether, roughly a million dollars in lower spend on wellness. You can see, last year, when I did this report, we were at thirty-nine-and-a-half percent pharmacy, we made some improvement to thirty-seven, I still think that that can be below thirty, and, you know, that's one of our goals, is to continue to look for ways to push that down. Last year, what drove a lot of that cost was weight loss drugs that are incredibly expensive, high-cost claimants, and their total cost, kind of similar from last year, and I think that would align with national data as far as percentage of folks that would be considered a high-cost claimant on a wellness program. Overall, our employee wellness fund is about an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar fund, so if we can continue to find ways, as a reminder, we did county-wide biometrics this year, where we tested A1C in blood pressure and waist circumference and cholesterol, and we've used that to identify risk factors and align people with one or more risk factors with a health coach to make sure that they have access to medication, make sure they have access to dietary, nutritional counseling, those type of things, with the goal of lowering our chronic disease cost and emergency room utilization, and looking, again, to save costs there. This is, this Board of Commissioners has a very responsible fund balance policy, on-site fund balance policy of about twenty-five percent. We're gonna end the year at about nineteen-and-a-half percent, so that's been drawn down between eight and nine percent this year. I would point out that had the FEMA public assistance application, which is a little over eleven million dollars, if that money had been refunded to us by now, or if it had not have happened, and everything else would have taken place as it did throughout the year, we would be about, we would be at about twenty-eight-and-a-half percent, so we would be above your policy. This is a temporary dip below that for one-time utilization. So we would be above your policy. This is a temporary dip below that for one-time utilization of fund balance to pay for the disaster recovery efforts that we've had. And we expect all of that to be reimbursed eventually through the FEMA Public Assistance Process. I would point out that our application, week before last, did finally make it to Washington DC after what seemed like 15 rounds of scrutiny, just to get there and be kicked back one more time. So it is a, it is a tug-of-war with a short rope, a lot. I think we're ahead of other counties in this region. When I talk to my peers, the Association of County Commissioners does a Thursday morning statewide call, and another call with just Western North Carolina managers regularly. And again, I think, I would say, a very special thank you to Margaret and her team. They've continued to largely champion that, but we meet on it as often as anything else, and we feel confident that those resources will come back to Burke County at some point, at some point. Quickly, and I'll close with these last couple of slides as it relates to debt service. This is our annual debt service for the year that we're in, about $4.8 million. You can see this hard falloff from this year to next year. That's because drawn and patent will pay off in March of 2026. This 10-year payout is a industry standard for measuring debt portfolio health. And what this means is, over the next 10 years, what percentage of your debt principal, your par value, will you pay off? And as you can see, by 2029, we're at 100%. And anytime you issue debt, you're typically going 10-, 15-, 20-year terms. So that 10-year payout is showing you what, what percentage of the amortization schedule have you completed and on the backside. So after, after this year, we'll be down at about a little less than 2% of our total budget. Remember, our total general fund budget's about 113 million, so, so, you know, lower than 2%. And generally, what you see is anything 7% or 8%, if you're, according to Moody's and S&amp;P and those folks, anything 7% or 8% or lower is about as high as you can score. So our total debt right now is about 28.4 million. Only about 12.6% of that belongs to the county. The other 15.8% belongs to the school system. I would point out that the school system debt, 100%, is paid for through NC lottery dollars and a special sales tax that's earmarked for school debt. And when you look at our debt load compared to some of our regional counties, and again, that can be allocated on a per capita basis too. We've got about 33.3, and that would be principal and interest. And when you compare, you do that on a per capita basis, we, we have about $375 per person, and you're able to benchmark that against some other counties in our region. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Again, your hard copy is in front of you. Happy to answer any questions for me to have on these topics, or any other information that you want to reflect on from '24, '25.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, any questions for Brown on his report?
I think I can certainly say, on behalf of this board, we're proud of the work that's been done throughout your department and throughout the county with every department, and appreciate all that happens, and we don't take it for granted. And with that, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to accept this report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify the up lifted hand. And that's five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number seven, scheduled public hearings. We have none tonight. Item number eight, informal public comments. Madam Clerk, this time I'll open the floor for informal public comments. Do we have anybody signed up tonight?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have three citizens signed up to speak. The first is Kimberly Clark.
Ms. Clark? If you'll state your name and address, please.
I'm Kimberly Clark. Hello.
If you'll touch that button on the right, so the red light will come on right at the bottom. There you go. You got it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Clark. Hello. I'm here regarding Hachoka, the organization that I founded, and that we've had a lawsuit ongoing for the past year, and we've had issues ongoing for the past two years prior to the lawsuit. And I brought the December 2023 letter that I wrote, and I'll have some highlighted things on the due date, Brian, because he wasn't then seen at that time, and this. The reason we're here, we gratefully appreciate the tax exemption, but the, all of the items have not been addressed. And that lawsuit was dismissed without any consultation from our attorney and from Brian. What is your county attorney's name?
Destin Hall.
Pardon me?
Destin Hall.
Destin Hall. Yeah. So we were kind of like not in the loop in any of that, so we're, just wanted to put that on record. And also to reiterate that we're really grateful. One of the boxes that we checked for tax exemption, which was discussed with Brian Epley and JR Simpson in November of 2024, was the tiny house, low-to-moderate-income housing that our organization has had on our radar since we landed here in Burke County. And we want to teach people how to do simplification living, so they can serve more in the community. And there's more to that. But when I had the meeting with Brian and JR, we stated that, I asked Brian, I said, I know that the zoning Peter, what is Peter's last name that retired? Mentor. Yeah, that I had had meetings with him regarding zoning and planning and all of that, and that he was retiring. And I asked Brian if I could come and speak with him once we got these two issues off the table. And he said, absolutely. Well, we never got those two issues off the table till recently, and we didn't want an interference of trade claim that we discussed with our attorney time and time again. So we went ahead and rolled with the tiny house project. So we have tiny house on our property, okay? And we need to solve that problem. And we don't know who to go to to solve that, because we asked for a meeting with Brian. When these two issues got resolved, and we thought they were going to get resolved more expediently, they didn't. And we're requesting that the checkbox that we did, the two, you'll have to cite it, Brian, the low-to-moderate-income housing checkbox, we would like that as part of the exemption request, because that's what we checked. And that was oversided when John Bridgers wrote the letter to us, which we just got last week. So there's that. We still have outstanding attorney fees that still need to be discussed. And I think there's some due process issues related to that, because, again, I stated this the last time we were here in July, had you guys responded to our request for tax exemption and the appeal in 2024 and in 2025, we would not have had to file a lawsuit at all. And that is a due process issue. So there's things. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. So I'm press, it's okay. I'm Marsha Love. I'm a board member with Kimberly at Hachoka. First item, again, a lot of what I'm gonna say is kind of what she just covered, but I'd like to thank you all very much for granting the tax exemption status. That was prayer's answer, and it was one step forward. Unfortunately, the three years that it's taken to get to that point has led to the attorney involvement and fees accrued. It was my understanding that the lawsuit for attorney fees was still on the table. And there, I think, like she mentioned, we'd requested a meeting with Mr. Epley, I think maybe the end of last year, once everything was solved, but that, still waiting on that. Like Kim said, we do still, we do have one tiny house now on site, and we want to be able to move quickly with that. We're nearing the beginning of a new year, and I just plead with you that any lawsuits, remaining issues can be resolved before we get to that time. I really am, all this is way above me. But I want to tell you a little story, if I may, about kind of where I'm at and what's in my heart with Hachoka. So I'm a registered nurse, and I had a patient come in, she's 25 years old and homeless. And she was there for a very serious life-threatening infection, life-threatening infection to her arm. I worked night shift, and I spent a lot of evenings with her. She's the same age as my daughter. And, you know, I quickly realized that she's just a lost little girl, kind of at the bottom, just in a bad place, and didn't, didn't feel like she had any help. Well, I was off for a few days, and, you know, I guess they got the infection cleared up. And when I came back, she had been discharged. I'm sure she got all kinds of list of resources and stuff available on self-care, care instructions and all of that. But I asked the night shift, I said, does anybody know where she went? Did she go to a home? Did she go somewhere? Nobody knew. And still, to this day, it really bothers me. I wish I had been able to tell her about a place like Hachoka, where there is powerful God-directed healing that might have, could have made a difference in her life. Sorry, it's just not really something that's bothered me for all these years. But anyway, my hopes and prayers for '26 are for a fresh start, and that a very positive relationship can develop between Hachoka and Burke County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman Britton, Burke County Commissioners. As promised, I'm here to share some thoughts with you that are germane to the health and well-being of our community. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the vital role independent community pharmacies play in our community, and the well-being of our residents, and why we should be actively steering patients to them as opposed to the large corporate giants, you know, that we might have also have access to. Independent pharmacies are more than just a place to pick up medications. They're trusted community well, community healthcare providers. They know their patients by first name. They understand their healthcare medical histories, and they go above and beyond to make connections so that people can have personalized, timely care. This level of service really cannot be replicated by big-box pharmacies, and I have the data to prove it. Patients need a more connected grassroots level of pharmacy care, like a member of your local family, just, you know, at your local pharmacy. Let's not forget the tragic story in Wisconsin that occurred to a young 22-year-old man, newly out on his own, walked into a big-box pharmacy looking to fill his inhaler for his asthma. The last time he filled it, it was $65. This time, they wanted $539. And instead of the pharmacist digging in and really trying to help this patient, he was sort of shooed aside, and, you know, the next patient was motioned forward. He left that day without his inhaler, and in a few days, he was dead. I want to also submit that community pharmacies are very flexible. They generally provide free same-day delivery to home addresses or work, special order medications, lots of patient counseling, special pill packing and sorting. They usually coordinate efforts with local physicians. Again, they're part of the local care team. This is incredibly valuable, but health plan data show that clinical outcomes are better when you fill prescriptions at a local pharmacy. Furthermore, local pharmacies contribute directly to our local economy. Think of a circular economy, right? Patients come in and fill pharmacies, fill prescriptions, and then pay taxes, and are participating in an economy that circulates right here, you know, as opposed to a linear economy, where profits are extracted from our community and sent in one direction, right out of town. Access is a problem, so when big-box pharmacies close their doors, like some have in our community, on my side of town, in the Oak Hill area, there was a Walgreens that sat on the corner. It now sits empty. So if we don't support our local independent community pharmacies, we could risk having a pharmacy desert. Lastly, community pharmacies are great partners, especially in crisis. So during COVID, we learned a lot about what community pharmacies could do, and they stepped in and did those things. Just a year ago, in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, did you know that a local community pharmacist, a local direct primary care doctor, and some local citizens all came together to collect medical supplies, take them to our local airport, load them up on military helicopters so that they could be airlifted to our neighbors in the high country? You should, we should really get together and talk about those kind of stories behind the story. I urge you to consider initiatives and partnerships that support independent pharmacies, and keeping healthcare local, keeping it, keeping it personal, and making it affordable. I did create you a little video behind that QR code from when the initiative came together during Hurricane Helene last year, so I hope you'll get a chance to watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gupton. Madam Clerk? All right. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public comment tonight. Appreciate those speaking tonight. This brings us to item number nine, consent agenda. Mr. Manager, we'll hear from you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Members of the board, fairly short consent agenda for this evening. Item one is a consideration for approval of, from the Animal Advisory Board, for updated rules and procedures. Item two is from the clerk's office to appoint, make an appointment to the council on aging. Item three is your monthly tax collection report for August 2025. And finally, for consideration, also from the Tax Department, is your monthly release and refund report for August 2025. All of these words, you know, were presented pre-agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the, or approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, signify the up lifted hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item 10, items for decision tonight. We have several items tonight. First one comes from Community Development and Registered Deeds, centralized the plat review function to the county staff. And I'll recognize our own Alan Clines, our deputy manager and planning director. Afternoon, Alan. And Stephanie, is Stephanie with us tonight?
She couldn't join us tonight, but she hoped I could cover this, the territory for us both. But thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public and staff. Working with the Registered Deeds Office, my office, Community Development, we're working together for a proposal to consolidate the plat review process here in Burke County. There's currently kind of two components of it. One is municipal local zoning rules, that every town has their own set of rules. And then there's watershed rules, and actually, every town can have their version of the watershed rules. And then there's that other component, that's the plat review components that are outlined in the General Statutes 4730. And these include verifying survey or certifications, owner's signatures, title block information, deed reference, adjoining property owners' notes, and other required elements to make a complete plat. So currently, municipal planners are doing both those roles, and we're proposing that the Burke County staff would cover the plat review components. Let the local planners and the municipalities cover their zoning rules and watershed rules, but let us consolidate the plat components. If you all are supportive of this change, we would be, kind of operate this beginning October 1st with a gradual rollout, and complete that rollout January 1st, 2026. And working with the Community Development staff, there's four of us who review plats. There'll be four Registered Deeds staff will also be noted as officers to, you know, in this capacity to review and sign off on plats if we need backup. So that's what's proposed. I can answer any questions for you.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions for Alan on this item? All right. Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-30.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. All those in favor, signify the up lifted hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you, Alan. Item number two tonight comes from the clerk, reappointments to the Burke County Board of Adjustment. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to make some appointments or reappointments to the Burke County Board of Adjustment. Gregory Smith currently occupies seat number four, representing West on the Burke County Board of Adjustment, and his term ends September 30th, 2025. He is willing to serve another three-year term ending September 30th, 2028. We also have another application on file from Damian Patton.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've heard the information from the clerk. We have two candidates for this seat, currently held by Gregory Smith, and we also- We have two candidates for this seat currently held by Gregory Smith, and we also have an application for Damian Patton. I will entertain nominations for this seat at this time, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Gregory Smith to the Burke County Board of Adjustment, seat number four, West, to a three-year term ending September 30th, 2028.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we accept Mr. Gregory Smith as a reappointment to seat number four to the Burke County Board of Adjustment. All those in favor, signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Item number three, also from the clerk, reappointments to the Burke County Planning Board. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The terms of appointment for Sean Freeman, seat number two, East, and Andrew Lautermil, seat number five, at-large, on the Burke County Planning Board, end September 30th, 2025. Both members are willing to serve another term. There are several applications on file for the board's consideration, and the term is for three years.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've heard the information. We have seat number two and also seat number five. Seat number two is, uh, East on the Burke County Planning Board, and we have Carol Lewis, Chase Dillow, Heather Ward, or Terry Swanson, or Sean Freeman, who is currently seated in that seat, who would be eligible for the East seat. I'll open the floor for nominations for the number-two seat at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Freeman to seat number two, East Burke Planning Board, for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2028.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have any other nominations for this seat number two? Okay, seeing here none, I'll close nominations and, uh, accept a motion to seat Sean Freeman to seat number two for the East seat for the planning board.
That was the motion.
That was the motion. Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of that motion, signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Okay. All right. Now, for the, uh, for the at-large seat currently held by Andrew Lautermil, we have a number of candidates or applications for that seat. Gentlemen, I won't read them. I think everybody has them in front of them. And I'll open the floor for nominations for seat number five, the at-large seat.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to reappoint Andrew Lautermil to seat number five, at-large, on the Burke County Planning Board, for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2028.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burns. That coming as a motion, I suppose, are there any other nominations? Well, that's not exactly appropriate, probably, but, uh, any other nominations? Hearing none with that motion, we'll take a vote on that. Those in favor, signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Item number four, clerk appointments to the evaluation task force. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At your July meeting, the, you all adopted a resolution establishing the Burke County Revaluation Task Force as a seven-member citizen and board charged with promoting transparency and enhancing public understanding and providing community input throughout the 2027 countywide property revaluation process. We've, uh, taken some applications. You have, um, five, uh, five applicants for, uh, five different seats on the seven-member board. So the requested action is to, and I would remind you, you got an application today that is at your seat, is to, um, appoint Tim Newton to seat number one, representing the real estate professional, to appoint Kevin Ferris, seat number three, insurance professional, to appoint Evan Crowley, um, seat number four, agriculture community, to appoint Jerry Norville, seat six, at-large, and to appoint Johnny Carswell to seat seven, citizen over the age of 55. And all of those have a term ending January 1, 2027.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've seen these applicants for the various seats for our revaluation task force. Do I hear a motion that we accept all these as presented by the clerk?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, signify the uplift in hand. Be five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Item number five, clerk reappointments, appointments to the Veterans Service Board. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to, um, make some appointments or reappointments to the Veterans Service Board, which is comprised of five at-large seats designated for veterans with an honorable service record. Uh, the terms for David Turburgen, seat number three, and Edwin Ware, seat number four, will expire on September 30th. These, these members have expressed a willingness to continue serving. Additionally, there are applications on file from Jim Frady and Dylan Smith. So for, uh, seat number three, uh, you can appoint or reappoint, uh, the same seat number four as, as you so desire.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, first we'll take seat number three, currently held by David Turburgen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reappoint David Turburgen to the Veterans Service Board, seat number three.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Those in favor, signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. I'll entertain the nominations for seat number four. That will be the seat currently held by Edwin Ware. Nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint, to reappoint Evan Ware to seat number four for three-year terms ending September 30 through 28.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Strad. Those in favor, signify the uplift in hand. And that'll be, we will reappoint Mr. Ware to seat number four. All right. Thank you very much. This brings us to item number 11, reports and comments tonight. Gentlemen, I'll open the floor at this time for reports, comments, and we'll start over there with, uh, Ms. Finance. Anything from you tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Attorney, anything from you?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Strad.
Nothing here, sir.
All right. Mr. Burns?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I did want to make the, just a couple acknowledgements, uh, let everybody know that Phil Berger or has appointed me to the North Carolina Education, Workforce, and Innovation Commission. We had our first meeting this past Friday, virtual. We'll have our first in-person meeting October the 10th in Alexander County. Also, wanted to mention that I did receive an appointment back to serve as an at-large director on the Policy Board, or the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And I was blessed to be able to join, um, Mr. Robinson down in Ickwood Fire Department to give an award to Zachary Wade, who was not able to attend our last meeting when we gave those awards out. And, um, as a point of personal privilege, I'd just like to ask everybody if they would remember Charlie Kirk's family and his passing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris Burns. Congratulations on those appointments. We appreciate your willingness to serve in those capacities and represent us well there. Mr. Manager.
Very brief. Um, did want to share, and I shared with board members last week, with, um, following the president's, um, announcement of, of allocating dollars for FEMA cleanup after what felt like a, a moderate period of stagnation, um, we've had some waterway debris removal projects funded and approved in Burke County. We started on really our most impacted areas, Lynnville, uh, up the northern side of the county, uh, last week, and I think there was eight approved projects there. So we're hoping that PPDR and some of the other, um, private, follow suit and, and get underway. Um, I know, we all know this, as a reminder, that's, that project, um, uh, on June 30th became managed by the state, so we're, the county's no longer in charge of that, but it is good to, to know that there's some movement. Um, so hopefully, we keep up that momentum. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say it was a pleasure to see all the kids and, uh, young folks that came here tonight, especially supported by their, uh, parents. It's a, it's a blessing to me to see parents that support their children that way, and they're young people, and I really like that. And I don't want to put the county manager on the spot, but would you like to address the automobile tax issue that you and I discussed earlier today?
Sure. Yes, sir. So, um, being brief, in, in North Carolina, when, um, in 2013, the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles, DMV, partnered with Department of Revenue and, and took over, uh, property taxes on motor vehicles at the time that you renew your tag. And from time to time, when a tag is expired and someone goes to renew it, so for example, your tag expires in March, you don't renew it until August, uh, that generates a gap bill, what's called a gap bill for those five months. Uh, and the, the DMV and Department of Revenue generate a report that's sent to counties that, that identifies those, because we, we don't do the billing, the assessment, or the tracking at this point. We just, um, um, and this, in this gap bill situation, do the billing. And so, uh, many, about 8,000 bills were sent out a couple of weeks ago from Burke County, based on information we received from the state. We've came to find out that some of that information was erroneous and some of the bills were incorrect calculation. Um, and we, we've gone through and, and found unduplicated bills. There's about 6,500 remaining. Some we've already dealt with, some are, were duplicates, but there's about 6,500 remaining. We'll be sending a letter to each of those folks. What we want people to know is that, um, before you go online, before you send a check in, make sure you really, really look at your bill, and if something looks in any way erroneous or doesn't make sense, to call the tax office, um, or to come to the tax office. We can compare the DMV system to our local system and reconcile that. I'd also say, if you've made a payment, uh, and you've overpaid in any way, that we'll issue a refund. As soon as we get that payment and apply it to your account, we can tell that you've made an overpayment and a refund will be issued immediately. So, um, um, we, we've had about 200 to 300 folks a day over the last four, five days come in, so we were dealing with those as they come, and we're happy to continue to do that. But if you're an impacted person, you'll be getting some notification from our office sometime this week.
Yeah. And I want to stress, a lot of times, ever since I can remember being a kid, watching county commissioners and all that, this board will sometimes get the blame for things that's not our fault. We did not send those out. That was originated down in Raleigh, and, uh, I just, I'm, I'm trying to make sure our board, that the community knows that our board is not responsible for that.
That's right. We mailed the bills based on information we received from that report, which had erroneous totals. That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you. Mr. Berry.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank County Manager Epley. He spent several hours with me. We kind of rode the county the other day and got to stop and see some of our spots. James Robinson back there, thank you, James. That place looks phenomenal. Uh, several of our convenience sites and the landfill and, uh, you know, I like to say the troops are motivated. Everywhere we went, I can tell there's great leadership around the county because folks were hardworking, uh, they seemed to be on task, and they seemed happy. So thank you, Brian, for what you do for the county.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Madam Clerk.
No comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I will make several courtesy reminders tonight. Uh, September the 27th, we're going to premiere, uh, our one-year anniversary of Helene, a documentary that our county and the city of Morganton, I think, has been working on, am I right about that, Mr. Manager? Uh, we want to take some time to, uh, remember that event. I'm sure most of us will never forget it, but we want to memorialize and, and think about that event. And we'll be doing that on September the 27th. This will occur at the Morganton Soccer Complex, 10:00 AM, rain or shine, and there'll be some, uh, some goodie bags there, I think. And we want to thank some of our community sponsors who has helped us to put some of that together. Uh, Burke County United Way, the Community Foundation of Burke County, UNC Health Blue Ridge, Hampton Inn of Morganton, Rutherford Electric, the City of Morganton, and Burke County. And so we look forward to spending a little bit of time together that morning to remember the events of Hurricane Helene that impacted our county in such a tremendous way. Then on October the 20, uh, October the 6th, rather, Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting, uh, here at 3:00 PM. And then I'll continue to, uh, remind our folks, youth groups, and others that would be willing to come and, uh, lead us in our pledge of allegiance at the, uh, beginning of our meeting. We'd love for you to do that. You can sign up through our county website or see the clerk to help you with that. Also, reminder, uh, for our animal services folks, spay and neuter your pets, foster or adopt pets at the Burke County Animal Services. And another reminder, uh, cover your loaves, the trash, if you're moving trash around through the county, please, uh, please cover that up as you go down the road so that somebody else isn't picking that up. Don't litter and pick up trash throughout your community. And I would remind you that we do have a link on our website, the Community Unification tab on our website. If, if you have areas that need special attention, that you have a concern about, you can go there and give us some information, and we'll do our best to respond to that as well. So with that, we'll come to item number 12, vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we have the following opportunities for citizens to serve on county boards and committees. The Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Drexel Planning Board, ETJ Alternate Partners, Health Management's Human Rights Committee, the Revaluation Task Force. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I would encourage you, uh, if you're interested in working and helping on any of these boards and committees, we would love to have your involvement. And, uh, you can, again, see our clerk for that, or I think you can find that, uh, application on our website as well. And, uh, I would commend our, our manager and team for a, a good kickoff with our citizens, uh...
Academy.
Yeah. Academy. Citizen Academy, thank you. Uh, this past week, I think, uh, Mr. Vice Chair helped to kick that off. Appreciate that, and, uh, appreciate those who, uh, came to attend, and we look forward to going through that, uh, over the next several weeks together. So thank you very much for those participating.
I would like to say about the Revolutionary War, the 27th also, that afternoon of Warren Camp.
Another, another, another reminder there, that'll take place after we move down House a little. All right. Gentlemen, that brings us to a closed session. We have no need for a closed session tonight. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn and reconvene at Monday Night Football somewhere.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of motion to adjourn, signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero.